Morning, everyone. Welcome to our February 11th regular council meeting for Elgin County. Second on the agenda is adoption of the minutes. Go ahead.
Resolves that the minutes of the meeting held on January 28th, 2025 be adopted.
Uber and secretary, please. Latham and Noble, all in favor? Motion carries. Next, we have disclosure of key near interests, the nature, general nature thereof. Not seen any disclosures. Moving on to presenting petitions, presentations and delegations. We have with us Don Maisak, board chair, and David James, board vice chair, West Elgin Community Health Centre presentation. Come on up to the microphone, please.
Good morning. I'm Don Maisak. I'm the board chair for the West Elgin Community Health Centre and my partner.
David James, vice chair, been on the board since 2012.
Okay, we, everyone can see our presentation. Okay. So today, next slide, please. Today, we want to meet and to talk to you about our centre, give you an overview and talk about some of our challenges, not only our community challenges, but they also impact all of Elgin County and additional information that we feel that you need to know. So we'll start with the centre overview. Jenna. So we received our letter of the patent in 1992. Our first service was delivered in 1994. And I'm proud to say that I was there. I'm their first social worker that they hired. So 30 years ago. So they moved from in 2004 to the main street. And then in 2012, we have our hub official opening. And then July 10th, 2024 was our celebration of our 30th anniversary.
A little additional history about the, what community health centres are and how they started. They were set up as an experimental way of delivering healthcare under Bill Davis's Conservative government back in the 1970s. In 1982, Larry Grossman, Health Minister, made CHC's part of Ontario's mainstream healthcare system. In 1987, Liberal leader David Peterson announced his government's intent to double the number of Ontario residents receiving primary healthcare. And as a result, many more Ontarians gained access to community health centres. So primary care has been an issue for a long time. It's not just a new issue here.
Okay, so this is our historical catchment area, and this is really important. So when, and it is reflected in our letter of the patent, we service West Elgin and Dutton Dunwich. And so that's approximately 9,000 people, 3,500 households. And you can see that it's being pushed forward. So we had been asked by the Ontario Health, Ministry of Health a while back to expand our borders, which we did, and accept unattached patients from other areas. And we'll talk about that further along the line. Next slide. So we, our total budget is around $7 million, which is low for a community health centre. We have 50 full-time equivalents, over 70 volunteers, and 7,200 clients, of which 3,100 are primary care and 4,100 are other programs and services, which would be diabetes, social work, mental health and health promotion. And we have a whole list.
The centre's open all weekdays, 8:30 to 4:30. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have an evening clinic for those who can't get there during the day. We do close over the lunch hour. We didn't use to, that started during COVID. We have an assisted living program, which is seven days a week, and 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, plus overnight coverage. And our clinical team is on call 24/7 by telephone. Are we a rural health hub? One of the things I would like to do, and I'm going to promote a book. I presume everyone here knows who Dr. Jane Philpott is. She was hired by Doug Ford. She was, a few years back, the Federal Minister of Health. She fell out with Trudeau. She had, she went to Queen's University and was head of the, her official. She was dean of the Faculty of Health Sciences and director of the School of Medicine at Queen's University. And it was from that position that Doug Ford hired her to advise him on healthcare for Ontario. She's written a book, Health for All, and I recommend it to you. I bought a few extra copies, I've only got one left. I gave one to Rob Flack, so he's got a copy of it. But it's a good read, and she sets out exactly what's needed to provide primary healthcare for everybody in Ontario. And some of the politicians are saying, oh, we're going to do that in four years. Uh-uh, not going to happen. But she's got a viable plan to provide healthcare for everybody. So I absolutely recommend that, that book. And, and the thing about community healthcare, community health centres, our model is exactly the model that Dr. Jane Philpott promotes, where doctors are not working on their own, where they've got teams backing them up. So that if a doctor's got a patient who's got diabetes, doctor doesn't have to spend time with that patient. We've got a diabetes team who specialise in working with people with diabetes. So we've got a whole, a whole bunch of people who will support the doctors. And one of the other points about that is if you're recruiting, you've got a new graduate, somebody who's done their 10 years of training to become a doctor, and now they want to start out and as a family physician. That's kind of scary if you're going to start out on your own with no support. Because typically, you're a business person. You've got to provide your building. You've got to hire your staff. You've got to keep all your, you've got to set everything up. If a doctor or a nurse practitioner comes to a community health centre, they just have to show up. We provide everything for them, plus all those support teams. So it really is a good model, and as I say, it's a model that Dr. Philpott promotes.
So just to talk a bit about some of our unique programs. The Community Health Centre is one of the only ones in Ontario, just in West Elgin, that has what's called community support service funding. And so that's like a separate envelope. And in that envelope, we provide transportation. We have an accessible van, and we will be getting a second one somewhere. We do meals on wheels. We also have assisted living. And that is something that, basically, there's about 30 units, 30 people, either older adults or people with disabilities that require 24-hour support. And we do that, we have PSWs. And so that is really the way of the future. And these assisted living units, if you can imagine, are directly behind the community health centre. So it's a walk, a quick jaunt. We provide diabetes services, and at one point, it's out to the entire Elgin County area. So we're not just restricted to our West Elgin, Dutton Dunwich. We have a mental health team, dieticians, health promotion. We do a lot with seniors, and we're known for that. Physiotherapy, these are our partners. And we're just starting up another caregiver support. This is our latest program, and it is for all of Elgin County. This is, we are the lead for the new First Five program. And what it is, is for unattached young, well, children that do not have primary care. So we provide that primary care to all of Elgin County for those young ones. This is a list of our partners, and I think we probably could have went on and had a second slide on that, but I think you get the drift. Our CEO, executive director, Andy, who most people know, has been incredibly collaborative. He's worked with everybody in Elgin County and Thames Valley. So you can see that there's a strong partnership as well between Central CHC and East Elgin Family Health Team and Thames Valley. This is the next slide, I'm going to have David speak to. It's a little small, but we're going to try to make the point.
This is just, the first, this slide shows our active client list, and it's divided into primary care clients and non-primary care clients. Excuse me. The thing to point out is that, yes, the majority are from West Elgin and Dutton Dunwich, but we've got people from Alma St. Thomas. We've got people from Chatham, Ridgeton, and from Middlesex County, Glencoe. We've even got clients from London who come out to us because they can't find a doctor anywhere else. Or they come out for the other, the other programs that we run. What is more interesting, next slide, is the clinical waitlist by geography. And again, because of the shortage of doctors everywhere, our waitlist is, and right now, there's, well, as of November, there were 423 people on the waitlist. We, we're taking them in as quickly as we can. We anticipate that with 423 on the waitlist, that should be down to zero in 12 to 18 months. But that's not accounting for new additions to the waitlist. We've been having discussions. Our letter's patent specified that our catchment area was West Elgin and Dutton Dunwich. The province, a few years back, said, no, you can take people from anywhere. That's now become a challenge. So what we are proposing to do, or talking about, I shouldn't speak out of turn because Andy is, Andy's in charge, is we will grandfather everybody who's on the current waitlist, and then we're going to create two waitlists. A waitlist for West Elgin and Dutton Dunwich, and a second waitlist for everybody outside the area. And then prioritize people who are from West Elgin and Dutton Dunwich. Excuse me. Because we just, we just don't have the staff to take, you know, everybody who wants, especially, as I say, London, Chatham, people from all over. The, the other thing, and I'm sure Mayor Pence doesn't mind my saying this, but they've just, Dutton Dunwich has just negotiated a new deal with, with their clinic in Dutton Dunwich. It's a two-year deal. And Mayor Pence has made no secret of the fact that it's difficult for Dutton Dunwich to be able to afford that. If, if that clinic closes in two years at the end of that contract, we also have a doctor in West Lorne, Dr. Gregor, who's announced his retirement, probably later this year. He's announced retirement before and then kept going. So we're not sure if he's going to, but he has said he's going to retire this summer, and he's up in his mid-70s. If Dr. Gregor retires, if Dutton Dunwich, after two years closes, our waitlist won't be 400 people, it'll be 4,000 people. And we can't cope with that, you know, there's no way we can cope with that. So we really need to start looking at, looking forward into the future. And Mayor Pence and I were just having a discussion about, well, is there a potential for the West Elgin Community Health Centre to take over the medical clinic in Dutton Dunwich? That's just a, that's just a brief discussion of what perhaps could happen. But the, the Community Health Centre and the Community Health Centre model can really be a part of the solution for providing primary healthcare in Elgin County.
Okay. So we are governance board. We're not operational. We leave that to Andy. We have a chair, vice chair, secretary and treasurer. We have a committee of the hall, finance, governance, client and family advisory council, and now fundraising, which is not something that has ever been done before. And we've had to do that. And I'll give you an example. One of our programs, the kid cooking. And, and we did not have enough funds for the food. The cost of food is just outrageous. And so one of our board members is also a newspaper reporter and very connected to service clubs, and we were able to address that problem. But my point being is that our operating dollars are not sufficient for us to even meet our current baseline clients.
We do have a strategic plan. Won't, won't bore you with the details of our strategic plan, but it is on our website. So if somebody wants to know, you know, what we're planning strategically, then you could go to our website and have a look at it. Our mission, partnering with our communities to achieve the best health and wellbeing for all. And we're doing that to the best of our ability. Strategic directions. Reimagine how our care and service improve equitable health and wellbeing outcomes. Reconnect with our team to co-create a meaningful, healthy and compassionate workplace. And through Andy, the staff and the management staff do a really good job of that. But we'll talk more about that when we come to talk about remuneration for our staff. And redesign a stronger healthcare system in collaboration with our, our partners. So those are our three strategic directions out of our plan. Excellent.
Okay, our community challenges. We have a lack of space. We would love to be able to have a nurse practitioner, doctor, some direct social work services as well to our residents in Rodney. We'd like to increase and to be able to see more unattached clients. Our base funding needs to be increased desperately and to address wage disparity. And David will give you some very specific examples, as well as to keep the operations and the lights on, because inflation's gone up. All of the costs have gone up. Our base budget has not. And let's face it, we're going to have an imminent retirement of aging physicians. And even though the municipality is very active in physician recruitment, there's not enough family doctors to be, to take the place of them. So as I said, health human resources is going to be an issue. Staff turnover, and this is where I'm going to stop and give this to David.
Yeah, the issue of, of wage, and not necessarily wage parity, but closing the gap. People in the health profession who work in London, Chatham, very often for hospitals, are generally well-paid. A registered nurse working in Chatham or in London gets $28,000 a year, more than the maximum we can pay our registered nurses. That's one, that makes it a real challenge to, to recruit people and even to retain. Nurse practitioner, doing the same job in London, $30,000 a year more than we are allowed to pay ours. And just as an aside, the articles that were in the, in the paper recently, and Larry Schneider's a member of our board and is also a reporter, and an article appeared in the London Free Press, which set out this, this challenge. And there was a response from the Minister of Health, which said, oh, well, CHCs are independent. They can pay whatever they, they like. That is absolutely false. So either the minister doesn't understand how community health centres are funded, or she's deliberately lying. I'll leave you to, to say which it is. We are funded by the Ministry of Health. It's a fixed budget. We are not allowed to have a, to run a deficit budget. We're not allowed to set a budget which, which shows a deficit. We can't even pay our staff a bonus if we've got a bit of cash left over at the end of the year. No, prohibited. We're not allowed to pay bonuses. We can't pay overtime because it's not in the budget. So if, if we ask our staff to work overtime, it's based on time off in lieu. So, you know, this is all controlled by the Ministry of Health through Ontario Health West. So, no, we can't pay whatever we want. Last year, we lost two mental health councillors. They'd both been with us for more than 10 years. Neither one of them wanted to leave. They love working at the health centre. And continuity of care is important in all healthcare, but particularly so in, in mental healthcare. They basically said they couldn't afford to stay. One was commuting from London, the other from Chatham. They got jobs doing exactly the same thing they've been doing, $24,000 a year more money. And they both had young families, they both had mortgages, and they basically said, they didn't want to leave. The, the young woman who was, who was there, was in tears when she was, she did not want to leave. She said, I can't afford to stay. So that wage gap has got to be closed.
Next slide. So 85% of the budget is for salary and benefits. 15% is everything else, and the base funding increases 6.5% over 15 years. The inflation has gone up 40%. So this has been nothing, it's been very, very, very little.
And that 15% of base funding, which is for everything other, other than salaries, the ministry directs us, oh, you have to switch from paper records to electronic records. You've got to buy software, you've got to buy hardware. You've got all kinds of expenses associated with that. Oh, can we have some money for that? Uh-uh, you find the money out of your existing budget. No, no increase to do that. And that's typical of the way they treat us.
So advocacy for staff. You may be aware that the Alliance for Healthier Communities has been advocating at the provincial level for wage parity. We ourselves have done quite a bit of advocacy, and so we.
We, you may, you may well know, well, we, we had a petition to, to go to the, the province asking for better funding. We had a table at each of the two local fairs, Rodney Fair and Wallistown Fair. Dawn was out there, I was out there for considerable, I was out there for all of Saturday at Wallistown Fair. And I'm fairly aggressive. Nobody going past our table without my saying, come and sign our petition. And of course, the first question back is, well, what's the petition about? Which opens the door. And then I would describe the fact of how, how bad the funding is and the fact that, you know, a nurse can get $28,000 a year more if they go into work for the city. Then the reaction, we had about 800 signatures, and we only ran the petition for like two or three weeks. The reaction from people who stopped at the table to talk was astonishment. But more than that, it was anger. Why are people in the rural areas being treated so badly? Why is this gap there? And of all the people I stopped who came past our table, and it was several hundred, I only had one person who refused to sign the petition, a lady, and she said, I don't sign petitions, period. Okay, that's fine. Everybody else signed the petition. And, and people, not just people from Dutton Dunwich and, and West Elgin. People from, you know, people from London said, well, I'm from London, can I sign? I said, if you're from Ontario, as long as you're not from south of the border, you can sign the petition. And people were anxious to sign. So there's a groundswell in our communities of anger at how staff at the community health centres are being, being treated.
So along with our advocacy at that level, we have presented at the West Elgin Council, Dutton Dunwich Council. We have met with the MPP a number of times. I've also connected with Roma and was basically told we should be going to delegation at the Ministry of Finance and pre-budget consultations, we did that. So we have been following and doing what they have been recommending, and we have not really seen any results as of yet, but it's still early in the year. So some other information for you, just to add on to Larry Schneider, our board member. He put together eight Chronicle articles, and I'm sure that you've seen them. And it was really to educate people about what a community health centre is and put a face to what the services are. The other thing is we put together an anniversary video. We've updated all our program brochures. We have a beautiful Facebook and website. And while we're active in the community, Santa Claus Parade, in the Rodney Parade. And really, there's been overwhelming support for our endeavors to, to advocate for our centre.
So we're not here to ask the county for money. We're asked, we're here to ask the county for support in lobbying, especially lobbying Rob Flack. Rob Flack talks a good talk. He's sympathetic. He knows about the issues. But it's the Minister of Health, Sylvia Jones, who's got to make the decisions with the approval presumably of the premier. So we need to, we want to keep the pressure up on Rob Flack as much as possible to keep lobbying. Roma has, as Dawn has said, are on side with us. They're happy to keep lobbying, and it's not just, you know, the rural north. This is, this is rural Ontario as well, so it applies here equally. So any opportunities to lobby at Roma, to lobby at the Association of Municipalities, AMO, would be much appreciated. And every chance you get to, every time you see Rob Flack, whatever the occasion is, when are you going to start funding our community health centre properly? We have to keep the pressure up as much as possible and for as long as possible.
Next slide. So before we take any questions, I just want to acknowledge that we do have two family health teams in Elgin County. So the Thames Valley, East Elgin, and there are differences. So there's differences in budget, and the main difference between the physician remuneration is that they're, they're not necessarily salary. Our docs are all salary, and we give them benefits and pension. Now, with the family health teams, they're wonderful. I helped set them up, so I am a fan, but there is a distinct. I helped set them up, so I am a fan, but there is a distinct difference. And there is a lot of appeal for the physicians to branch out, do long-term care, they can go and do the emergency department, they can work more the hospitalist if they want, top up their monies. So it's not a complete apples-to-apples comparison.
So we would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I think we all understand the challenges. Myself and councillor Cookett sit on the recruitment team for Elgin St. Thomas, and we know the challenges of trying to recruit family doctors. And I have sat in front of Minister Jones four times now and keep hammering at the same, and getting the same answer as far as family health organizations versus teams, and they seem to favor the family health organization to a higher degree, which really doesn't make sense. We will keep hammering at it, and we, it is a challenge. It's at the point of being almost a crisis for family doctors and nurses in our rural areas, and I appreciate the hard work you're putting into it, and I'll open up the floor for comments. Councillor Lason, then councillor Cookett.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to the health. I'd like to, just like to thank you first for the job that you do. We know how important it is, and you don't give up, and you keep on going. And that goes for all the staff that works at the health center. I have had things to do with the health center, and I've never found staff so sincere as they are there. They obviously work there because they like working there, not for the money. That's quite obvious. The only one big worry I have is that you're training people, they get up to the certain level as they need to go, and away they go for the money. And that's not their fault, that's the way it is. And, you know, unfortunately, you're not keeping the experienced staff there as you need because they're opting out to go for bigger money, and I can't blame them for that one. But, you know, it's very unfortunate, and until you get more money and can even things up, I think that's unfortunate, that's the way it's going to be.
Absolutely. We are fortunate enough to have... Oh, sorry. And when our human resources lead is recruiting, that's what she has to emphasize, is the collaborative atmosphere, how good a place it is to work. And she's upfront, saying, you're not going to get a big salary if you come and work for us. So that when she's recruiting, she puts that right up front. And, you know, you lose 90% of your applicants right away.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to... Surprising, and certainly something that we need to know. I'm still curious about the main difference between the CHC and a FO or a family health team. You mentioned some of that. And you also said, I think David Woods, when we said that the model that you use is the model of Dr. Philpott. I remember Dr. Philpott very well, and it was really terrible that she did not, stay in the health department because she did have a great way to solve some of the problems. So I guess, I'm just saying, I would appreciate at some point, or tell me where I find what the overall model of the CHC is and how it's different from a FO or a family health team, because you seem to be working better than either one of those. The question I have, I guess, is, it's sort of surprising to me when I look at the statistics in terms of people who are on the client list. We have 478 from Elmer, and I'm wondering, and zero from Malahide. Maybe Elmer's number is included in Malahide, I don't know. Interesting also that there's none on the waiting list, so maybe the move has changed, I don't know. But I just found that surprising that there's that many people. I guess it underscores the issue of, that we have in Elmer in terms of attracting doctors, because we do attract them, but they leave. Last comment I have is, a lot of people poo-poo the idea that some people just say, well, throw money at it, and throwing money at it doesn't matter. Well, it does matter. You know, you expressed that very well, it does matter. Money is going to make a difference in terms of how we, you know, provide healthcare in the province. Thank you.
So some of the other differences between CHCs and family health teams. Well, CHCs, historically, they came first. The family health teams came second, and they truly are funded at a different level. They also have a catchment area, but many of them also kind of like are similar to us where they take what they can for unattached. They've recently been put under the auspice of Ontario Health. So you have the Ministry of Health, and you have Ontario Health. So now family health teams are under, same as nurse practitioner-led clinics. So that might start to level the playing field. Because if you've got, let's say, social workers and nurse practitioners and family health teams that are making more than CHCs, it's going to be pretty evident, particularly at the end of the year when we can see that on sunshine list. But each of the family health teams had the opportunity to decide which health professional they wanted on staff. So some, now we don't need dietitian. Some, you know, we don't need a health promoter. That's another difference. So all of the CHCs have the allied health professionals. It wasn't a pick and choose. The other difference is that CHCs began from a community kitchen table. So people like Duncan McVale and Graham Warwick sat at a kitchen table 30-something years ago and said, we need primary care, and they put together a needs assessment. When East Elgin Family Health Team was born, they basically, there was no call for CHCs, but they were sitting on a beautiful needs assessment, and they had a kitchen table group. I know, because I was there. And they dusted it off, submitted it as a family health team, and they were accepted. So it really is a very different type of model where CHCs are more community-driven, if you will. Does that help someone?
Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for your presentation. And this is a question, just for clarification and edification for me. Both the CHC and the family health teams are funded through the Ministry of Health. And does the Ministry of Health, are they prescriptive in both in what funding levels are? Do they control what your salary levels are?
Yes, they do, they provide us with a salary grid. We typically, we're paying all our staff at the top of that grid. But because, so they fund us for the 50 full-time equivalents. So each position is funded, fully funded, for the 12 months of the year. But there's no additional money. So we can only, and they fund according to that salary grid. So we can only pay up to the maximum of that grid, which is giving you those differences that I outlined. And the three, the three I picked, the registered nurse, the nurse practitioner, and the mental health councillor, needless to say, those are the three worst, the three biggest differences. But there's differences right through all of our staff. As I mentioned before, we're not allowed to run a deficit. We can't, we can't pay bonuses, we're not allowed to, it's prohibited. We're not allowed to pay for overtime, it's time off in lieu. So yes, absolutely, the Ministry of Health, they give us a fixed budget, and that's all we get, and there's no money tree to get any additional. And Dawn mentioned the fundraising we've been doing. The board does not support fundraising for salaries. It doesn't, it wouldn't appeal to people. You know, if you go to a service club and say, we're struggling to buy food for our program for teaching children how to cook, you know, would you consider funding it for us? Yeah, they can relate to that, and they're happy to. But you can't go to the Kewanis or the optimists and say, we'd like to give our, you know, our nurses a pay raise, would you be prepared to contribute to that? No, no, we're not about to do that. So, yeah, we are absolutely controlled. Not only do they control the funding, we have what's called an Emsar agreement. They tell us how many clients we're to have. Every position has got targets as to how they work. So the ministry controls all that we do.
We're not in a position where we can even move dollars if we have a vacant physician to an NP and to be able to offset it that way. So this is very, very rigid, and they must, and the CHCs must, and family health teams must ask permission for making those changes.
Councillor Cookett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, just a comment. I'm going to throw this out there, and I think everybody here is going to groan, but one of the models that was presented at the latest symposium came from B.C., a suburb of Victoria, in which municipalities actually hired doctors and paid for them. I didn't hear any groans, but anyway, the reason that that kind of worked is that, of course, it allows for certain benefits that doctors don't otherwise have. So anyway, I throw that out there, and maybe when we're in delegation with Minister Jones at AMO or something like that, we can throw that out and listen to her groan. Right, thank you.
Maybe councillor Hens is way ahead of the game here. Councillor Jagir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and through you, thank you, Dawn and David, for that presentation. I don't live in West Elgin, but I live in Western Elgin. This is a huge problem, and bringing it to this body for advocacy, I think we can help. And we could sit around here and say, well, jeez, healthcare, that's not a municipal responsibility. And we're absolutely right in that. The problem is, many small municipalities have assumed that responsibility. We can't afford that responsibility, but what choice do we have? We need healthcare, our residents demand healthcare. I know how much they demand it, I've just gone through getting beat up pretty bad on that whole issue. So I would encourage everyone around this table, when you get an opportunity, and it's just, the subject is rural healthcare. We're left behind, there's no question about that, so, and I will continue that advocacy, and I hope this group will as well. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead, councillor Jagir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you also for the presentation and raising the awareness of the issues. Because my question is, I'm wondering, as part of your advocacy, is there also advocacy to review the model itself? Because my understanding is that provincially, there's a very specific mandate for CHCs, and it's laid out, I think probably in your letters, Patton, to serve underserved communities, which probably was a clearer definition in 1992. But now, we're in a situation where pretty much every community is underserved. So the family health teams, so all the other systems that we have are advocating for the same group, like our community is underserved, our community is underserved, and everybody has statistics. So I'm wondering then, and I think even, I think in 2017, I think there's an Auditor General report that started advocating for, or at least had some recommendations to say, is it time to review? Like that concept of the underserved and barriers to access. Well, now it feels like anywhere in the province, there are barriers to accessing healthcare. So I would just want to make sure that if we're advocating for CHCs, are we also zooming out and not, don't want to be too self-centered about like saving the CHC for the sake of CHC? Because I think your mandate is about access to healthcare. So can you help us zoom out a little bit? And where, is there a conversation to be had about the mandate and the model, and maybe revamping the whole thing? Because Dr. Philpott advocates for community-based healthcare.
Certainly, the, one of the big differences between the primary care delivered by a community health center and a family doctor who's got his own practice, or is in a clinic, and they're going under the OHI model and being reimbursed directly. A family doctor who's operating on his own can pick and choose who his patients are. So if somebody comes in with multiple issues, multiple problems, the doctor can say, uh-uh, no, no, I don't want this person as a client, no, I'm not taking you on. We don't do that at the community health center. So basically, anybody who walks through the door who needs a doctor, we will take them on, no matter whether they're drug addicts, no matter whether they have got three or four different problems, different comorbid, so high comorbidity. That has been taken into account in the size of our panels, in that the province will survey our clients and say, yeah, you've got a lot of high comorbidity clients. The average panel size, the panel, the panel size is the number of people a doctor has on their books. It doesn't necessarily relate to how often those people, you know, show up. You know, I've got a doctor at the community health center. I haven't been in for a checkup for three years, so I don't bother them. I'm healthy, I don't need to. But the panel size for an average doctor in Ontario is about 1,500 patients. Some doctors take a lot more than that, I know in Dutton Dunwich they do. Our doctors are not required to have a panel of 1,500 because of the high comorbidity of a lot of our patients. So that's one of the differences. But somebody who comes in, somebody like me, who doesn't really need a doc, because I'm healthy, yeah, you know, that helps bring up our panel size. So that's probably the biggest difference. We do not pick and choose who will be patients. So if there are more people who, without high comorbidity, can't say the word, comorbidity, yeah, we'll, no, we'll certainly take them on. The other thing about, you mentioned they were originally set up to service people who had trouble accessing care. Well, that does relate to comorbidity, but we've got urban CHCs. And the CHCs in downtown Toronto are dealing with really difficult clients, and will continue to do so. But there's a need there, because if the CHC doesn't do it, then the rest of the medical profession really doesn't want to. So I hope that helps. We're not trying to, you know, we're prepared to look at the broader picture. But we ask, one of our priorities is still to service those people who have difficulty getting primary healthcare.
And I guess, sitting on the Health Recruitment Partnership, the one thing we see time and time again is the new young doctors coming into the profession only want about 800 patients. So when a doctor retires that has 1,500 or 2,000, you have to replace that doctor with at least two, sometimes two and a half doctors to fill that gap. And it seems like the direction the province has gone helps facilitate that as well. And they get to pick and choose who they want, like you say. And maybe that model needs to change where you don't have that option, and if you're in it for, you're in it for the long haul. But we definitely... But we definitely know the need. The symposium two weeks ago made that loud and clear, and we're digesting that information from 30 of the, 30 members of the public from different walks of life, mostly medically related. So we seen what they think. And once we're done with, at the Partnership Committee, we'll be presenting to county and the city on our results. But we get it, and we definitely get what the problem is. Anything further? It's been a great discussion. Thank you so much for coming in and presenting. We do appreciate it, and we'll continue to work on your behalf. And I think Catherine might have a resolution.
Resolved that the presentation from the West Elgin Community Health Center be received and filed, and that Elgin County Council request a delegation with the Ministry of Health at the AMO conference in August advocating for increased access to healthcare in rural communities.
Mover and secretary, please. Latham and Noble, for the discussion. All in favor? Motion carries. Thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you so much for inviting us and listening to us. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to committee of the whole.
Resolved that we do now move into committee of the whole.
Deputy Warden Ketchba, secretary, Counselor Cookett, all in favor? Motion carries. Next, we have reports, my first, my report on activity for January. The report's in front of you. It was a very busy month, and hopefully it slows down a little bit. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. If not, I need a mover and secretary.
Resolved that the report titled Warden's Activity Report, January 2025, from Warden Jones, dated February 11th, 2025, be received and filed.
Mover and secretary, please. Pence and Noble, all in favor? Motion carries. Moving down to 6.2, Manager of Economic Development, Tourism, Strategic Initiatives, Elgin Incentives Application. Laura's yours, Carolyn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Through you to council, the Elgin Incentives CIP was approved by the local municipalities in 2015. The program offers a tax increment equivalent grant, which defers part of the increase in property taxes due to major development. Applications to this grant must be reviewed and approved by the local council and county council because the grant allows for the increase in municipal and county taxation to be deferred for a period of five years. Evelyn Sausage Kitchen in Southold has applied for this grant. They are relocating their existing business from downtown Sheddington to 1.3 kilometers east on Talbot Line in Southold. The project will see a purpose-built 2,400-square-foot commercial space that will include retail and processing space for the business. The project also includes building residential space above the commercial space. The cost of the project, including land acquisition, is estimated at $2 million. So the Elgin Incentives Implementation Committee has reviewed the application, and they recommend that the grant be applied to the commercial and industrial assessment only. So that's only the 2,400 square foot space on the first floor, and that the grant defers 100% of the increase in the first year, and that it decrease by 10% each of the following years for five years. This grant application was also reviewed by Southold Council and was approved by Southold Council a few weeks ago. So county staff estimate that the possible value of the tax deferral could range between $2,600 to $4,800 in the first year. And this is just the county portion of the grant, depending on MPAC's assessment. So the recommendations are before council, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carolyn. I like, just Evelyn's, she's been a staple in Southold for many years. And Heather Harris, when she bought the company with the name about a year ago, has had very big ambitions, and she is quite a person to, she, how would you put it? She has big ambitions, and she's not afraid to tell you. She won the pitch, which is not easy, about three weeks ago roughly, something like that. And last night at township council, I thought we were going to have another announcement, but because we were short on people, we couldn't, we can't make that announcement yet. But she continues to roll on. Anyway, I'll leave up questions from council members. If not, a resolution.
Resolved that the report titled Elgin Incentives Application Tax Increment Equivalent Grant for DHC Harris Enterprises from the Manager of Economic Development Tourism and Strategic Initiatives, dated February 11th, 2025, be received and filed, and that the Elgin Incentives application submitted by DHC Harris Enterprises Incorporated, Evelyn Sausage Kitchen, for the Tax Increment Equivalent Grant be approved by council, and that the grant be applied only to the commercial and industrial assessment portion of the project and not any other tax classes, and that the grant be applied to 100% of the county portion of the tax increase, decreasing by 10% for a period of five years, and that the chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the financial agreement for the approved project as described in the application package for the applicant DHC Harris Enterprises Incorporated.
Mover and secretary, please. Pence and Latham, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Peter, can we take a five-minute break? Stretch our legs? All right. Okay, we'll come back to order now. On to 6.3, Director of Engineering Services, Transportation Master Plan, Phase One. Laura's yours, Peter. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of county council. Good morning. This report presents the revised TMP Phase One report and now provides an overview of the significant changes that have occurred most recently around Elgin County. And this will serve as a guide to develop future solutions. The purpose of the Phase One report is to identify transportation issues, needs, and constraints within Elgin County. And subsequent phases of the study will develop the appropriate solutions in supporting strategies and policies. This new revised Phase One report will supersede the report published in 2022 and now includes a list of new developments. So first of all, the city's annexation of 800 acres from the municipality of Central Elgin to create the 1,500-acre industrial area has been included. The announcement of Power Code to develop the electrical vehicle battery plant in St. Thomas, and those projected impacts on the county network have been included. The incorporation of the most recent 2021 census data is there. New population growth forecasts, updated plans and policies from not only the county, but our local municipal partners and adjacent municipalities, and now includes the 2024 official plan. Current post-pandemic traffic data is being utilized. You'll know when we kicked off the TMP, where we're in the midst of COVID and we're utilizing previous data, previous to COVID, because the data through COVID, no one was driving, it didn't make any sense. So we've updated the most recent traffic data. And that allowed us also to incorporate the most recent collision data. So now the report utilizes the previous five years from 2020 to 2024. And that allowed us to update the operational analysis at intersections around these projected growth locations, predominantly around Central Elgin and the city of St. Thomas. We've now incorporated some discussion and dialogue about the potential future impacts of the proposed development of the former psychiatric hospital lands south of the city of St. Thomas. We've halted an EA that we had previously initiated with the province to resolve an intersection issue at Talbot Line, Rahm McNeil Line, and Wonderland Road. Now that the MTO is developing around about, sorry, an overpass at that location, that EA has been halted. We've included the city of St. Thomas's major arterial road developments, as well as the MTO's 20th of Highway Three, the extension of the four-lane highway to Number Four, and the two interchanges, one at Wellington Road and the one that I've just discussed at Rahm McNeil Line and Wonderland Road. Within the report, you'll see some nice artist renderings of those planned construction initiatives as well. We were able to utilize technology, Strava specifically, and have been able to incorporate most recent cycling route data that users are actually using. Where cyclists are cycling upon the county road network. We've been able to review the changes to the transit network, specifically the Middle Sex County Inner Community Transit Service and the new transit route established between the city of St. Thomas and Dorchester with a new stop at the Amazon Plant. We've adjusted the TMP's near-term, medium-term, and long-term planning horizon years because we took this two- or three-year pause. And finally, we've incorporated the county's newly adopted in 2024, the Corporate Mission Vision and Values and Strategic Plan. So this updated Phase One report will now be published on the county's website for public review and comment. The next steps as we develop the Phase Two report will include the completion and approval of the county's cycle master plan and road network rationalization. Both of these initiatives will be presented to council in the near future in advance the TMP, which is still on schedule, on track, to be completed by July 2025. The Phase Two report will address many opportunities as presented within this Phase One report. I mentioned the cycle master plan. We're, we have developed it. We're putting together a presentation for council's review and approval. For council's information, the draft CMP as it currently exists will add $8.5 million in the 10-year plan. It also adds $1 million within this year's plan of that $8.5 million that we've included in the 2025 capital budget as a placeholder. Should council approve the CMP, and we'll go forward. Two of those significant routes happen to be within the municipality of Dunwich, the resurfacing of Talbot Line and the rehabilitation of Fingle Line. Both of those sections of road are included in the draft CMP. So staff's included the cost to pave the shoulders as cycling lanes in this year's budget. Should council not support the CMP, those items can be removed from the budget. Also is a fulsome review and look at the transportation asset rationalization. So this isn't only road segments that really shouldn't exist as county road segments, but what local roads should maybe be county roads? And we should also be reviewing structures. And the review does look at structures. We have a handful of county-owned structures that don't even reside on county roads. They facilitate very few users daily. And a couple of these structures are more than 100 years old and require replacement. Those replacement costs are currently included in the 10-year budget, and staff is recommending that these structures do not remain under the county's jurisdiction going forward or the assets be closed permanently. And a fulsome report identifying all the road segments, what the rationalization is being used to make these recommendations, including structures, will be presented to council in the very near future. We'll also be looking on how all these growth needs will be accommodated. We've identified in, within the report, you'll note that there's a page on, page 159 of the agenda, where we look at intersection analysis and specifically in regards to collisions. And it's a difficult metric to compare. No one likes to see collisions on any section of roadway. Unfortunately, this seem to be human nature. A lot of them are caused by human behavior. So we do have a collision history at a number of intersections, and we will be looking to resolve, to make any safety improvements that are appropriate at these locations. And that will be included within the Phase Two report, as well as capacity restraints based on future population projections and growth projections around employment areas around the city of St. Thomas. And finally, one significant initiative that will be reviewed are transit solutions. We will be reviewing conventional transit solutions, rural transit solutions, all the way to on-demand and hybrid models that are used by other municipalities for options for council to consider. All of those costs, with exception of the cycle master plan that I mentioned, are not included in the current 10-year plan. So just forewarning council that although we tried to, staff endeavors to provide a fulsome 10-year plan for council's review, there are a number of initiatives that do not reside in the plan currently. And after this, seasons of deliberations in council's review of the Phase Two report, we will structure those costs within the future 10-year plan. I would be happy to answer any questions in regards to the Transportation Master Plan Phase One report. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Questions for Peter? Go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. Not questions per se, but more of a comment. Thank you for the wholesome report, you know, considering the fact that this was launched back in '21, and it's finally made its way this far. Some of the information regarding rail services are perhaps a little bit dated. I would encourage council just to keep an open mind and do not discount the value of the short-line rail service to the region and to the future expansion of the industrial basin. Within particular, I want to mention that the Kyuga subdivision is gaining traction. GeoRail is working very hard, and the potential seems to be there, you know, to service not only just the St. Thomas area, but in the Southold as well. With that, of course, comes added pressures from an engineering perspective of crossings. And so that's something just to keep in mind going forward. The next comment I want to offer is that, if I put my lower or local municipal partner hat on for a moment, I'm not sure I'm looking too forward to the road rationalization, unless we happen to have a trade-off of perhaps assets moving back and forth. Otherwise, I can see our little neck of the woods with some nice windy trails, perhaps that formerly county roads.
Yes, sir, Mr. Warden, to Deputy Warden Ketchba. Thank you for mentioning the railway services. I tried to put my finger on exactly where in the Phase One report we do discuss this. It's duly noted. Staff would absolutely like to see commercial cargo and freight utilize rail services. You know, we were the railway capital of Canada at one point here, and unfortunately, so many tracks got removed. It would reduce the burden on our road network. And I think the Power Code development understands the value of rail. The city of St. Thomas is building a railway yard within that development site that's going to be owned and operated by the city. And we know that there are a number of other investments by CN. Staff has worked collaboratively with them last year to improve two-level service crossings, one on Rahm McNeil Line and one on Ferguson Line, and will continue to support railway services as a means of reducing capacity constraints on county roads. Secondly, as far as road rationalization, and it's a topic that personally I've brought to council, this will be the third time. And in each of the other times, county council has placed more assets on the county and not assumed any assets, except for in 2018, when the county took over Wonderland Road from the township of Southold. We took the opportunity to divest some local roads to the township of Southold during that activity. There are two phases to the road rationalization exercise. One is to simply understand what assets remain under whose jurisdiction. The second is, what does the transfer protocol look like? Do we do an even swap, as mentioned by Deputy Warden Ketchba? Does the county improve those assets as is currently identified in the 10-year plan and then divest the asset? Or does the local municipality receive funding in lieu of that investment? There's many things to unpackage and digest as far as what the transfers of assets may look like if council should entertain the idea of transferring assets.
Any other questions? I know with regards to rail, obviously, GEO is putting a land, land port in the Broccoli, say, the old Ford Lance as well, and putting a lot of money into it. I hear you might have had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago. It's a little different. But they're definitely being aggressive in what they're trying to do. Counselor Noble.
Yes, sir, Warden. So when we look at these master plans, 2021 through to '23, we probably had a record number of work-from-home scenarios. So I'm sure that's a big factor when we're planning that. The other part of it is a cycling master plan. For Central Elgin, some of the roads that are there that I'm familiar with. For Central Elgin, some of the roads that are there that I'm familiar with are fairly narrow and traveled at maybe a higher rate of speed. Would there be paved shoulders that would be, you know, presented for something like that? Or, but also coming back to the work-from-home thing, that I think all that with everything else that we have going on in Elgin County play a factor in our planning.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Noble. Absolutely. And we were excited to be able to update the Phase One report because I think we've all realized traffic volumes have increased on our road network. So this is using the most recent data. There was a lull. Traffic volumes decreased on some major routes by 50% during some months of the COVID years. So we're using current real data and understanding that some people still may work from home, but our traffic volumes are increasing. And you'll see some maps within this Phase One report that show where this activity is. And you can appreciate most of it is going to, from London 401 down around the city of St. Thomas. Port Stanley is getting very busy as well. As far as the cycle master plan, there will be a fulsome report presented to council. But yes, paved shoulder is the only cycling asset that staff would recommend. Section 54 of the Municipal Act dictates that pedestrian facilities shall reside with the municipality's jurisdiction. So the county does not build multi-use paths, for example. If a facility is separated from the physical roadway, it's not under the county's purview to be investing in those type of assets. If it's a paved shoulder that's directly adjacent to the roadway, then yes, those are the type of assets that will be presented to council to form part of the cycle master plan. And this isn't, the cycle master plan on a countywide level isn't meant to address all the nuances and needs within every community. It's going to develop a spine network across Elgin County to get to every community or most communities. And as I mentioned, council will be able to receive that fulsome report and the investments tied to it. Because not only are there going to be $8.5 million worth of new capital needs within the 10-year plan if the fulsome cycle master plan is adopted by council, these are not one-time costs. Lines have to be painted annually. The pavement's only good for 10 to 15 years, depending on what shoulder substrate you're putting it on. So this is going to be new assets that have an initial cost and a forever cost.
Anything further? Go ahead, Blaine.
Thank you, Warden. Just a couple of thoughts, because I think there's been some excellent discussion. Deputy Warden Ketchba, you mentioned the connection to rail, and I couldn't agree more because it's, we're seeing that. And I saw that in my previous life. The ability to provide rail service for economic development is a key element. And it can't be overstressed, I think, that, you know, the ability to provide that service directly is so key in continuing to grow the industrial side of our communities. The other thought that I'd like to share with council, and Peter mentioned it on a couple of occasions, the impact to our budgeting going forward. So planning documents like this really speak to the vision that council has for the community. The relation to our financing speaks to transferring that vision to reality. So where the connection will start to become more apparent, I think in the coming months and certainly over the next year or two, is when you look at planning documents like this, the connection to our annual business planning through what I've referenced to council in the past as a long-range financial plan, which is basically the repository for all of that type of visioning and that transfer to reality, and then what it means on our annual plan and how we pay for that ultimately. So with the ability to continue to, you know, build reserves to address this, Peter mentioned again, it's not just the initial capital cost. It's our ongoing operating costs to maintain those assets once they're constructed. All of that information needs to come together in one place. So as we're continuing to discuss, you know, this year's annual business plan, I would respectfully ask council, keep in the back of your mind that the coming few years holds a lot more potential as well as challenges. Thank you, Warden.
Counselor Cookett, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a comment concerning the cycling master plan. I can understand the rationale that the primary focus, as you state, and responsibility of the county is to provide the third level of connection, which deals with commuter and spine cycling networks. However, that kind of addresses only one particular need. If there is a need there for people to cycle from Elmer to St. Thomas, for example, or from one community to the other, I think the kind of cost that we're incurring, $8.5 million over 10 years, really only serves a very small proportion of the people. I would like the county to take a closer look at providing recreational and touring cycling networks that would allow people within each community to kind of have a cycling network inside the community or just outside the community in, you know, in the rural areas. I'm not sure how we would do this, but I think we should not forget the fact that most people will probably use cycling as a recreational activity within the community. And we're only really providing, I think, for lack of a better word, the elite cyclist who would go from one place to another. Just a thought to kind of throw out there, let's not forget that perhaps we should be supporting local neighborhood cycling.
Well, I totally agree with you, Counselor Cookett. You know, Perry Lou and I have bought e-bikes, and that's a whole different demographic now with e-bikes and older people that don't want to pedal their butts off all day so you can actually get exercise at a more leisurely pace. And we like to travel and go places, but it's daunting for an older person to try and pedal down Union Road to Port Stanley or up Dexter Line right now. It's, it can be a little scary. And that extra little bit of comfort of a bike shoulder would be definitely beneficial to us older people that want to continue to be active. Anything further for Peter? Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden. So on the report, we have about county bridges on local municipal roads. Just curious about a backstory on that, how that actually happened? If we could talk a little to that, and maybe this is on our report. So what's the plan going forward on that?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Noble. As mentioned, council will have an opportunity to fulsome review any asset network changes. However, for county-owned bridges on local roads, those are known as town line bridges. So this emanated from a previous act, provincial act, Highway Improvement Transportation Act, which has been since repealed in the late '90s. And if there was a structure that traversed a water course and it essentially connected two municipalities, some of these bridges aren't directly on the geographic town line. For instance, Jamestown Bridge, it's a few hundred meters removed, but essentially it acts as the connection, a significant important connection point between two municipalities. And at that point, the province dictated that the upper-tier government would look after that expensive asset to ensure connectivity amongst the communities. These structures are aged. They're more than 100 years old in almost every instance. And when that act was repealed, it was stated that the assets you owned before the repeal of the act, you will continue to own indefinitely. So that's why we continue to own those assets.
Thank you. So the other part of that is, is there reserves that are attached to these bridges?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Noble. I know that our Director of Finance is establishing capital reserves. The cost of the replacement of a couple of these structures that are at their end of useful life and as recommended by consultants through our biannual OSUM reports, have recommended replacement of two of these structures, and that's Jamestown Bridge and Fulton Bridge. And those are included currently in the 10-year capital plan. It's staff's desire specifically in regards to those two bridges. And again, council will have a fulsome opportunity to review how we've made all of these recommendations. We're recommending that those two assets be removed from the county network. And they could provide a local activity crossing for maybe ATVs or pedestrians, but there would still be an ongoing responsibility to ensure they were kept in a safe state of repair. Again, those decisions aren't before you today in this report. Just wanted to give you some idea of what's to come, and you will see these fulsome reports and presentations in the coming months.
Thank you, Peter. I know with regards to Southhold and Fulton Bridge, it's like traffic counts in single digits. And it's very few people, just a couple of local people might use it to get from one place to another. But reality is, the usage of that bridge don't justify the bridge being there any longer. And we already have mutual agreements with Central Elgin for water maintenance on the other side and Southhold and fire protection. So reality is, at some point, that bridge will be closed or barricaded, whatever. I don't think we'll probably tear it down, because that's way too expensive. But that's just the reality of the situation. The bridge is no longer justified to be there. Counselor Widner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through to Peter. I'd like to go over some of this collision data, and I'm looking at specifically page 159, where it shows Rahm McNeil Line and Imperial Road with one fatality. I know how, these are the numbers that you were given. I don't know when they consider a death of fatality at a crash. But in fact, there was two. There were the Donna Deans and a Bernice Farquhar, a year apart. And it was a result of the collision. So if in fact that number was changed to two, do we know where that rating of that whole thing would go up higher on this list?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Widner. Thank you for that updated information. The consultant was provided the Eris Provincial Police Collision Reporting Data that the county is able to receive. That's how they came up with these data points. I can't speak for why a fatality potentially was missed, unless potentially that happened after the fact to a certain period of time. This was the data provided through the collision reporting system. If there was an additional fatality, right now, these are not ranked based on fatalities or severity of injuries. They're identified as what's gone on, if it was wildlife, if there was a fatal injury or a non-fatal injury. But they're ranked in total number of collisions currently, this table is. Obviously, if we were looking at ranking them per fatalities, we have two intersections that have identified fatalities, and the order of these would be different. All of this information will be taken into consideration when developing the timing of network improvements.
Thank you for that, Peter. I just, I'm still here to advocate for these two ladies. I don't want to see their desk go unnoticed. And that information, I think it should be updated to result that there's two fatalities there. I don't care if they died two days later. They still died as a result of the collision at that intersection. So I just thought I'd bring that up and see what we can do. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Jagir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Peter. The, just a few clarifications around the next steps for engagement. So can you remind us, who is the county advisory committee? The study team? And the actual specific steps for, because you said this would get published after today and for feedback? Because my ask on that is, you know, this is always, this type of document is daunting for anyone to look at, not, you know, in this specific field. So I would insist on any public outreach being prefaced with, let's say, like three specific questions, like to help the reader say, here's a report, we'd love your feedback. Please tell us A, B, C, like a bit of a guide to reading? Because otherwise, you know, we're being asked and the members of our communities are asked for feedback, but you kind of look at the report and it's hard to know where to start. So those would be my three questions, please.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Jagir. Absolutely. Public engagement began in earnest when the TMP was kicked off in 2021. We developed a community cycling committee, which included every local municipality as well as members of the community. We also developed, and I think that's what we call it, the Community Engagement Group. I forget exactly what we called it, but it really was all of our community, local municipal representatives that sat on that group. We have not struck another meeting since we've revised this. However, we are in earnest now going to meet with the local municipalities. We've most recently circulated them the draft cycle master plan for their comments. That plan only identifies hard asset infrastructure recommendations on county roads, not on local roads. There's a couple signed routes only on local roads. So I don't expect there to be any hesitation because there's no recommended actual costs on local roads for the cycle master plan. But we will be engaging with the LMPs when we develop in advance of bringing it to council, for example, the road rationalization report and the bridge rationalization report. Again, these things were already discussed at significant length a few years ago, but with the pause, we have not re-engaged with that group. So we plan to. And as far as the Engage Elgin site, we've got a meeting scheduled with our communications staff person to advertise the revised Phase One document. And thank you for clarifying, because I think that's a great idea, be very specific with some questions that we can hopefully get some response from. However, the Phase One report does a pretty good job of identifying some of the comments that have already been received through the first rounds of public engagement. And those are already going to help inform us with the potential solutions for future reports. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden. This is an excellent report, and I thank you, Peter, for it. I think it's important for the residents of Elgin County to read it. It has a lot of information that I really found interesting. I know everything kind of ties to our transportation, and I really do recommend that everybody reads it. Thank you.
Okay, anything further? If not, I think we have a resolution.
Results that the report titled Transportation Master Plan Phase One Needs and Opportunities Update Report from the Director of Engineering Services dated February 11, 2025 be received and filed.
Hoover, Sec, please. Widner and Ketchba, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Peter. Next down to correspondence items for consideration. Nothing today. We have Western Warden's Caucus media release. Obviously, Chair Martin is trying to throw her hat in the ring for bigger and better things. See how that goes. And down to other business. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Results that correspondence item 7.2.1 be received and filed.
Hoover, Sec, please. Hans and Noble, all in favor? Motion carries. Down to other business, statements and queries by members? Not seeing any. Actually, anybody who's interested, our Winter Fest is on Saturday. Starts around 4 o'clock and lots of food and hot chocolate, hot dogs, and fireworks around 7:30. If anybody's interested in standing around the cold for a little bit, it's a lot of fun. Dress warmly, you're right. Notice motion. Matters of urgency. And closed meeting. Go ahead.
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act Section 239.2. Closed meeting item number one, labor relations under Section D, labor relations or employee negotiations. And closed meeting item number two, sunset provincial lands under Section H, information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province, or territory, or crown agency of any of them. And Section K, a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board.
Hoover and Sec, please. Noble and Latham, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, you want to go ahead with resolution come out of closed?
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Hoover and Secreter, Jagair and Cookett? All in favor? Motion carries. And next resolution?
Closed meeting item number one. Resolved that the confidential report from the Director of Community and Cultural Services be received and filed.
Hoover and Secreter, please. Hance and Jagair? All in favor? Motion carries. And item number two?
Resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Hoover and Secreter, please. Noble and Latham? All in favor? Motion carries. And next motion to adopt recommendations of the committee of the whole.
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the committee of the whole.
Hoover and Secreter, please. Ketchba and Noble? All in favor? Motion carries. And next consideration of bylaws?
Bylaw number 2506, procedural bylaw, being a bylaw to regulate the proceedings of the municipal council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin. Resolved that bylaw number 256 be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Hoover and Secreter, please. Noble and Hance? Further discussion on this one? All in favor? Motion carries. And next confirmation?
Bylaw number 2507, confirmation, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the municipal council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the February 11th, 2025 meeting. Resolved that bylaw number 257 be now read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
Hoover and Secreter, please. Latham and Cookett? All in favor? Motion carries. And finally, adjournment?
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 10:49 a.m. to meet again on February 25th, 2025 at 9 o'clock a.m.
Hoover and Secreter, Widner and Hance? All in favor? Motion carried.